I'd like to call this best meeting, a special meeting of the Pueblo City Council to order. Today is October 28th, it is 6:58 PM and we are now in session. Madam Clerk, could you call roll?
Mark Aylott.
Here.
Larry Tencio.
Here.
Ed Brown.
Here.
Dennis Flores. Solange Jimacoli Batista.
Here.
Bob Shum.
Here.
Laurie Winner.
Here.
Mr. Flores is duly excused because he's out of town. First order of business is what I would like to say is this meeting was called because a citizen filed a complaint against our mayor and it is the duty of the president of City Council and City Council to address it. What the outcome will be, we don't know. We're going to be looking into it. No one has made any preconceived ideas of what is going on. We will look at the facts as we should and make a determination. Does anyone else have anything they would like to say? Council members?
I'd like to get the city attorney to give us a clarification of what our role is and what we're to accomplish through this process.
Well, the role of City Council is to decide if this complaint has merit. If in fact there is a violation of the Code of Ethics, then the council should schedule a hearing. The mayor has a due process right to a hearing. And if that hearing, Mr. Rogers can make his case, the mayor can make his case. You could assign this case and ask that the municipal judge hear the matter. Your options are, do we investigate? Do we give? Do we seek another legal opinion? I have sent you a copy of a letter that I sent to Mr. Rogers saying that his complaint is completely meritless. It doesn't state a claim either under the municipal code or under the city ethics code. You're entitled to get another legal opinion on that. You're entitled to set it for hearing, but as city attorney, I'm recommending you move to dismiss. There's nothing here that violates the municipal code or violates the Code of Ethics.
And that's exactly what this whole proceeding is going to be about.
Yeah. Your first determination is if the facts are correct, does it state a claim? I mean, that's the first thing that happens in any any legal proceeding. Does it state a claim assuming that the facts are there? I mean, the mayor did send the letter. The question is, did, does that letter violate the Code of Ethics? Mr. Rogers doesn't cite any section of the Code of Ethics that he claims was violated. I mean, the mayor doesn't have a personal interest in the outcome of the election. That's principally what the Code of Ethics is all about. You cannot benefit personally from a transaction. You cannot take information that you receive as a member of City Council or as a city employee and then use that to your monetary benefit. That's what the Code of Ethics address. And none of that is alleged here. He doesn't like the letter that the mayor sent. I think the letter that the mayor sent is factually and legally accurate. It's a correct statement of the law. He may not like the letter, but I think the mayor was being prudent in looking ahead and saying, if 2A does not pass in 2022, the city will receive half a million dollars less in property tax revenue. If 2A does not pass, the city will not, will receive $10 million less in 2023 in property tax revenue. That's, that's a 10% cut in the budget. So I think the mayor was certainly within his rights to let these people know that if we have to give refunds, if we have to give property tax credits because of tabor, there's going to be a lot of pain and it's going to be suffered not just by the city and its departments, but by the other nonprofits that we support.
Anybody else? Well, if you got anything to say now. Okay, I would like to move to that we go into executive session.
I've given you a script so we can.
I moved to go into executive session for the, for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-402, print four, print B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes to receive legal advice from the city attorney regarding a citizen ethics complaint filed against Mayor Gradisar. May I have a second? Any have a second? Do we have any discussion? May I?
I have a question. So Mr. Kogosik will be attending an executive session?
I mean, who else would give legal advice?
Well.
I was unaware that you had a law degree. Are you licensed to practice law?
So.
I, I made an executive decision and that Mr. Kogosik will basically give us that same advice that he said in his comments to us, except for a couple of other things that we should as a body be aware of in terms of how we progress forward. I have all the confidence in the world that Mr. Kogosik can do that. If we have opposing opinions, then we have the right, as Mr. Kogosik said, to hire an attorney for City Council and then proceed that way. That has nothing to do with the facts or the incidences of this case or anything else. It just has everything to do with procedure. And based on the number of people that showed up tonight, they believe that the procedure should be as transparent as possible without, without any interference from anyone. So in executive session, we'll talk about certain things involving the case. I do have a motion and a second. Hau in favor?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a statement before we go into executive session.
Sure.
Is that we're going into executive session to get legal advice and that's the intent of the executive session. And I don't disagree with that. But all discussion between City Council and we need to come back and reconvene and any discussion on this needs to be in public and transparent.
Absolutely.
So legal advice is separate from discussion.
So we're coming back here after the.
Exactly.
Yes.
I do, I do have one more thing, Laurie. So would it be possible for us to discuss and then invite Mr. Kogosik in?
No.
No.
Okay, because I just feel like there's a conflict of interest.
Remember, remember that Mr. Kogosik, the only thing he's going to do is state the Code of Ethics and the city code as to how we proceed to the next step of this procedure. That is all.
Okay.
Nothing else. We're not going to talk about the case in any way, shape or form. If we want to talk about representation for City Council, we can. If we want, that's the only thing that we can talk about.
Okay.
And I have confidence in Mr. Kogosik can certainly do that for us. He's a preeminent city attorney. I believe that he can do that for us. If we decide as a body that we need other, our own representation, that's fine. We've discussed that in the past and no one has ever disagreed with that. Call for the question. Pass a 6-0. We are now in executive session. Okay, I'd like to reconvene this meeting, this special meeting of the Pueblo City Council. And huh, where'd he go? Oh, jeez, I thought he came with us. I'm sorry. I'm seeing bobs all over the place. Yeah, it doesn't matter. Now I'd like to reconvene this meeting, this special meeting of Pueblo City Council. Do I expect that we have comments from City Council? Anyone want to start? I'd like to make a motion to dismiss this. We have a motion to dismiss this claim, this claim of against the city mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Schilling, a second by Mr. Brown to dismiss the complaint. Any discussion?
I'd like to.
I'd like to start. Okay, thank you, Mr. Aylott.
The, the issue that I see is that I haven't had this information except, I guess we got it Wednesday or Wednesday night. I don't know the exact time. I'm obviously not an attorney. We have a city attorney who's advised us. But I mean, there still seems to be questions that, that, that would probably need to be answered and maybe we should go further into those questions. You know, at what's brought to the forefront is specific letters sent not to non-departmental entities that receive funding from the city of Pueblo. And within these letters, it states that if 2A does not pass, the city will not be able to retain excess revenues and they will have to be returned to taxpayers. In that event, my recommendation will have to be reconsidered. So I think it all comes down, was the intent of the letter to garner of support for 2A? Or was it just a matter of sharing information with those non-departments and those entities on, on what would happen? You know, on the top of it, and the city attorney made the statement earlier when we, when he gave his presentation, is that in the 2022 budget, I believe there's 500, I don't know the exact amount, 500 and some thousand dollars that if 2A doesn't pass, will have to be refunded to the taxpayers. But the reality of that is, even if the $560,000 is refunded out of the 2022 budget, how does that affect non-departmental budgets? So that's where I have huge confusion in the $556,000. And I guess I would, I would ask, I guess Laura Solano was the interim finance director or very involved in the financing, if, if that's the case. And if I'm reading that right or if I'm reading that wrong?
You know, I'm happy to explain that.
Okay, that's good.
We collected excess revenues in 2020 of that amount. I think it's 576,609. That has to be refunded if 2A doesn't pass. 2021, we're also going to have excess revenue. Calculations have been given to me suggests that if, depending on what the sales tax does, and we don't know that, and we won't know what's excess revenues are until next July, when our audit is completed. But the estimates given to me say that they could be as high as $6 million next year. It could be as high as $4 million the year after. So that's $10 million that we collected and spent that has to be refunded to the voters. That's how it affects the budget. Is if we have $10 million we have to refund, that's $10 million we can't spend. Can't spend it on roads, can't spend it on non-departmental budget requests. It has to be refunded to the voters. That's, that's, that's what happens. This letter was sent to 29 organizations that requested money. They requested money and out of courtesy, I felt I should let them know what my recommendation is going to be to City Council. And some people maybe, you know, we ought to maybe read it out loud so that people can understand what was sent here. Because it's not very long. It says, I reviewed your request for fund. And this one happens to be Mr. Curtis. The one was sent on September the first, the rest were sent on August the 23rd. Once I made my determination with the leadership team of what I was going to recommend to you for funding in the non-departmental budget, I felt like I should tell them that. Because they had made requests probably in May or June. I wanted to let them know that this process was going forward. We do this every year. I have reviewed your request for funding from the city of Pueblo for 2022. After careful consideration, I am pleased to advise you that I will recommend to the Pueblo City Council, I will recommend to the Pueblo City Council that you be funded in an amount of $15,000 in this particular case. In the other case for SRDA was 42,117. This is the second paragraph. This decision is contingent upon the passage of ballot issue 2A revenue for roads, which will be on the November 2nd, 2021 ballot. If the issue passes, the city of Pueblo will be allowed to retain excess tabor funds and will be able to fund your request and my recommendation. If 2A does not pass, the city will not be able to retain excess revenues and they will have to be returned to taxpayers. In that event, my recommendation will have to be reconsidered. I know that like the city, you are in the process of preparing your budget for 2022. Unfortunately, a final adoption, a final decision on your funding request will not be made until after the results of the November election are known and whether the city is allowed to retain the excess revenues. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions regarding this matter. This letter was set out in August. You know, does anybody think that it's related to this city council election? I mean, council president Atencio indicated that the complaint was filed by a citizen. But let's be honest here, the complaint was filed by a candidate for City Council. That's who filed the complaint. And I would suggest to you that it's a cheap political trick to try to gain attention in the last moments of a political campaign. These letters have been floating around the community and as I say, it wasn't one. It was 29 letters that were sent out there to many agencies. I saw the complaint on television last night. He was on channel 13 and they did an interview with him. And his position was that the mayor should not be out there trying to influence voters. Now that's about the nuttiest thing I've ever heard. That's about the nuttiest thing I've ever heard. Council, where do you remember when you ran 2B? Were you out there trying to influence the voters to pass 2B? Of course you were.
I was not on council at the time.
You weren't on council at the time, but 2B passed? Do you think, do you think you could? If you were on council, might advocate for the passage of certain propositions? Of course you can. That's what people do. That's what leaders do.
This isn't political. You're off this lead. It's office two days.
The problem, please. So that's the. I have, I also have questions, Mr. Mayor, in that you said that we would spend that money and then have to refund the money that we've already spent. It's my, my thinking has always been, we collect January, February and March's sales receipts, then pay for December's bills. So if we pay December's bills and there is excess amount of money, we would save that to refund it if we didn't de-bruce. By the way, I'm in favor of de-brusing. I just have questions on what's going on.
And we spent.
I, I, I believe I'm correct in that, in that we collect receipts for X amount of months and then pay our bills for a preceding month. So we would know that we're collecting X excess amount of cash because we pay our bills.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that's incorrect with all due respect, Mr. President. In 2020, we collected $576,000 that we were not entitled to collect. We spent that money. So the money was spent. Now we're asking for permission to keep it, to allow us to retain that money. If the voters say no, then we have to give it back. Then the money, the money's been collected. The money has been spent. We didn't know that until the audit in 2021 of what we did in 2020. But the $576,000 was collected and spent in 2020. And that is, I think, exactly the mayor's point. We won't know how much we overspend or over-collect in 2021 until the summer of 2022. And without 2A, we're going to, the money we already spent, we're going to have to give back. That's how it works.
I hope I'm, I don't run my family that way. Spend the money first and then come back later and. That's not the way to run a business.
Your family's not governed by tabor. This is, this makes no sense. I mean, I agree with you, but we, and we won't know what the amount of that is till the audit is done. And then we have to run a complicated formula that's based on what's in the constitution and what the courts have said about, are you under or over your tabor limit? And at that point, we're six months, months into the next year. So.
I, I mean, I understand that I'm not fully comprised of what's the finances of how it's done. But it just, we should, were you going to put $567,000 or whatever into the street repair for 2021 if it's already been spent? And how are you going to put another five or six or 10 million dollars into the 22 or 23 if we already spent it in 22?
We're going to have to refund the money out of reserves.
No, that's not what I asked. Because you said we were going to spend $10 million on streets in 23 because.
22.
22.
Right, we're collecting this year, we're going to spend $10 million.
How are we going to do that if you spend it before?
We're spending it in 2022. We're spending it in 2022 and in July of 22, we'll know whether we should have spent it or should have given it back. That's why if 2A doesn't pass, there will be a change in the budget. Because we won't know until July of 22 whether we should have spent it or not on streets.
Well, you know, we're all, we're getting all discombobulated here. And, and I'm just going to go back to my original question. If it's 560 some thousand dollars, the revenue for roads says to keep 560 some thousand dollars and then put $5 million towards roads. And the ballot language says revenue for roads.
Right.
All I'm asking is that if 2A didn't pass, you've already told us that we're going to have to go back and make adjustments in this budget because you're not going to have $10 million for roads. You're not going to have, and for 2023, because you're never going to, you're going to have to pay that money back and the $560,000 will have to come out now. So my question was, is when this letter was written, the $560,000 for 2022 really had no bearing whatsoever on their funding? Because it's coming out of roads. It's not coming out of non-departmental expenses.
Well, we weren't talking about $576,000 in this letter. We're talking about the city budget and how much the city allocates to nonprofits and what the state of the city budget is if 2A doesn't pass. And we have to look at refunding perhaps $10 million over a period of two years.
But the big story is, is that the city could legally collects under tabor X amount of dollars. And based upon sales tax revenue and property tax revenue and all the revenue that goes in, we're allowed to keep a certain percentage of the money that we collect. If we collect too much, that's what we're talking about. We have to give it back. No matter whether 2A passes or not, the city still operates where it gets to keep X amount of dollars and probably a three to 6% increase. Usually that's how it comes out, a three to six increase in our, our revenues. And that's going to stay consistent, like it has stayed consistent over the last 20 years on what we're allowed to keep on that revenue. So even if 2A doesn't pass, we're still, if, if sales tax was up 16% for 2021 and there's $6 million that has to go back, we still get to keep probably three, four, five, six percent of that money as an increase over the previous year. So it, it just comes back of saying their funding has never been contingent upon whether a road, I, well, whether this go passes or, or not passes.
Maybe, maybe you're reading the letter wrong. My recommendation for their funding is contingent upon 2A passing. Now you, as a city council, you set the budget. You can do anything you want to. You can be as reckless or as careful as you want to be. What I said in this letter is my recommendation for how much you're going to get is dependent upon the passage of 2A. Now, as a city council, you can do whatever you want to. You don't have to balance the budget. You can do whatever you want to, but as the mayor and the elected leader of this city, I'm going to be prudent. And if 2A doesn't pass, I'm going to be very, very careful about the money we spend and the money I recommend that you give to. and the money I recommend that you give to non-departmental requestors because we're gonna have to pay that money back. We're gonna have to refund money. That's what my responsibility is as the mayor and the person who's charged by the voters was leading the city and administering the budget.
So for argument's sake.
Please, please.
For argument's sake, if 2A didn't pass, in the 2022 budget is $10 million towards roads, which $5 million is coming from general fund money.
Right. Correct you to.
So that $5 million would obviously not be available. So that $5 million, if our, if the case is that there's only $6 million based on estimates that we're going to have to pay back in 2023 by reducing the, the roads by $5 million because the community didn't want to pay, give up their excess taxes, we immediately resolve $5 million, and then we have another million dollars that we would have, 1.5 million dollars that we'd have to come up with out of the budget that's been proposed to us. Correct? I mean, I just want to know that I got that right.
Go ahead, Laura.
Mr. President and City Council, I think you're holding the budget there where on Form B1, it shows an estimate of the closing of 2021 to be $11 million. And we, we built a 2022 budget as if we can keep all of that $11 million and propose that, that was the mayor's proposed budget. If a ballot measure 2A does not pass, it is estimated that $6.5 million out of that $11 million will have to be refunded, which means that you're gonna pass a budget based on numbers, whether 2A passes or not, and we may have to go back because that budget is built on the passage of it. That includes $5 million for roads. It includes 20, it's just what you said, it includes 20 new personnel. It includes other expenditures that fully spend that $11 million. And if it does not pass, then you have to prioritize where we go back, and we're gonna have less money to budget for 2022.
But if you look at capital improvement projects, there's $5 million in roads.
Out of general fund.
Out of the general fund, so you've got $5 million, that's all I'm saying.
You are correct.
You have $5 million of the 6.5.
Yes, and then the rest of them.
And we may not be able to hire 20 new employees.
Correct, and that's where the budget would have to go back to be revisited, and it would extend to employees, it would extend to non-departmental, it will extend to other general operating expenditures from all departments. Because we would have estimated $6.5 million less than that $11 million that is currently budgeted for 2022 as proposed. And the following year would have an estimate of a lower $4.5 million. Those are based on rough estimates of what revenue could look like in the way of sales tax-generated revenue for the next two years. And those calculations were, were made by a retired CPA who was a previous city finance director.
Oh, Laurie, I'm sorry. Have you had something to say? I think we veered off course, way off, one thing.
No, because I was trying to make a point.
Can I say something?
I just want to make the point that, and I know it got, it got taken way off. All we're talking about is the intent of the wording of the letter, that's all I was saying. I, is that I don't believe that non-departmental budgets are dependent on the road tax. That's all I was saying.
Mr. Schilling.
If we're short of money, it's gonna come from somewhere, and the non-departmental ones are always the ones that get hit first. The letter went out a month ago. To me, why all of a sudden this came up, I guess, you all probably know. And you folks out in the audience, you really lose a lot of credibility with all of us when you speak out, sir. And I think that's not a good example for your children. But I think that, I think that we're here trying to focus on, did he, was he ethically wrong? Okay? Order, please. This whole thing should, it's got a bullet focus. Did he break the law, was he unethical?
We have a motion on the floor. We have, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Schilling, would you state your motion again?
The motion is to dismiss.
And we have a second. Any further discussion on that motion only? Call for the question. Ms. Willina, do you want to talk on this? Yes, unless you want to say something. Call for the question.
A yes vote.
A yes is to dismiss, and no is to not dismiss.
3-3, it dies.
Dies. All right, now we got a question. City council, where do we go from here?
I would accept the motion to hire an independent attorney for city council. And I fully expect, Mr. Kogosik, that that's, that attorney will agree with your findings. I told you before, I have all the confidence in the world in you. But I also want to make this as transparent as possible to our citizens. And I, if that attorney. Do you need a second? And I don't mean agreeing with the content of the letter. I mean agreeing that there was a violation of Code of Ethics or the city code.
Do you need a second?
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I get it restated?
Why can't we wait till we have seven?
Well, we can conduct big business with six. If, if a member is wrong, we don't stop business, we continue.
And you can bring it back up again in the next meeting.
Yeah, you can bring it up.
Any further discussion?
Okay, sure.
I think it's a good idea to have outside counsel. In the spirit of transparency, you know, I had mentioned to, I guess Dan and I had a conversation about an attorney interprets the law. So another attorney could interpret these ethics laws differently than Mr. Kogosik. I also think there's a conflict of interest, and the definition of conflict of interest is when an entity or individual becomes unreliable because of a clash between a personal interest and self-serving and professional duties. So Mr. Kogosik serves at the pleasure of the mayor, he's the mayor's employee. So if he's not interpreting the law to possibly the mayor's satisfaction, that could be self-interest in worrying about losing his position.
That's not an issue here.
It is, it is an issue, Mary, I'm explaining why we need.
I understand it.
Outside counsel and, and, and in true transparency, I was explaining that. Bob, please, this is a very, this is very serious.
I apologize.
This is a very serious issue.
If, if Mr., what was his name, Rogers, wants to pursue this further, he can. But we are charged with the idea, or charged with figuring out whether what, whether the complaint is valid. That is our, that is our only charge.
Right.
Now, if we have questions, we can call for outside counsel to give us that, that information. That's fine, there's nothing wrong with that. But our charge is to whether, is whether, am I correct, Mr. Kogosik?
Well, yeah, you, you have the right to hire an attorney. And as I said, you've had the right to hire an attorney since the day the mayor took office. You started a process to hire an attorney, and then you didn't hire one. You can hire an attorney, but the question is, does that letter violate the Code of Ethics? That's the complaint.
That's the complaint.
Where, you know, and what it opens up, however, is we can look at everybody's campaign literature and say, that's not right, that's not correct.
True.
That violates the Code of Ethics. So you're opening up a can of worms. But if, if, if you want to hire an attorney to give an opinion as to whether that letter violates the Code of Ethics, I'm, I'm, I'm happy for you.
And the only reason I would do that is for full transparency. I don't want somebody coming back and saying, well, Mr. Kogosik is, is Mr. Gradisar's lawyer, therefore he's pandering to Mr., I don't want that because I told you before, Mr. Kogosik, I have all the confidence in the world that you're right. And I believe that another lawyer, as competent as you are, will come in and say the exact same thing. If he does, this whole thing is over. If he doesn't, then the, Mr. Rogers has all the right in the world to pursue this wherever he wants.
Wait a minute. Thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Mr. President, I appreciate it.
And it, that's, that's, I believe that's the way it will go.
Explain something to me. Larry, you just said, after we talked to the attorney, this whole thing is over. We just voted, the thing failed, so we no longer are carrying on a hearing. What you're saying is, we can have a lawyer, and then we can bring it back, but this hearing is over now, correct?
Well, this motion to dismiss has been denied. The motion to dismiss can be brought up at the next council meeting where we will have all seven members present.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you. It's my colleague, Batisha.
Hi, Mr. Kogosik, I want to ask you a question. Um, I know that you represent the mayor, but you also do represent council, correct? And have you represented council on numerous occasions?
Yeah, especially when you get sued.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear that you're not only the mayor's attorney, but you also represent.
You read the charter, and I respectfully disagree with Ms. Winters' assertion without legal authority that I have a conflict of interest. I sent a letter to Mr. Rogers today saying the same ethics rules don't apply to government lawyers as attorneys in private practice. That comes from the Colorado Supreme Court, which gives me my license to practice law. Government lawyers can represent multiple government bodies when they have a dispute. And that happens all the time. So to say that I have a conflict of interest is legally incorrect.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, make that clear with everyone, that you represent all of us. But in the spirit of transparency, in fact.
And I'm always delighted to receive phone calls from council members who want information or a document. They get it the very same day because I represent them.
Okay, but in the spirit of transparency, if that's what we need, to go outside and seek counsel, that's fine. But you do represent all of us.
Yes, I do.
And if you remember correctly, we, when we were going to hire an attorney, that was a sticking point in that that attorney was going to represent all of council, not each one individually. And Mr. Kogosik has always made himself available to us individually.
So please remember, when we went on that attorney search, nobody wanted the job. Okay?
Well, except that one, the one wanted it, but then he backed out. Oh, the guy that runs from Duango?
No, no.
No. One more, Ms. Winters.
Yeah, so Mr. Kogosik, just this, this rule 1.7, can you just explain that a little bit?
Yes, if you look at comment 18 from the Colorado Supreme Court, quote, "Government lawyers are authorized to represent several government agencies in intra-governmental legal controversies in circumstances where a private lawyer could not represent multiple private clients." Because government lawyers, whether you work for the federal government, the state government, the Attorney General represents many state agencies. I can tell you because I served as an Assistant Attorney General, and I can tell you that the government agencies did not always agree. But I represented them all, and that's what I'm doing here. I do not have a conflict of interest.
We have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion?
Can I clarify the motion? I have the motion as a motion to hire outside counsel to review the complaint.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, Mr. Ayla?
How will, how are we gonna determine who outside counsel is? If, if, you know, don't shoot me, but I, I think we should get another attorney from the city attorney's office.
Well, we can discuss that.
Other cities do that, and they, they.
And Mr. Kogosik has offered that. Well, let me offer a suggestion.
Sure, okay.
Call CML. Get, get an opinion from the Colorado Springs City Attorney, the Denver City Attorney. You know, it's a specialized body of knowledge. The general practitioner doesn't understand 90% of what I do. So consult with another city attorney's office to see if that letter violates the Code of Ethics. That's, that's the only question. You may not like the letter, you may think it's inaccurate or incomplete, but does it violate the Code of Ethics?
We have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Call for the question.
Pass the 6-0. We will, I'll take your advice, I'll call CML and get some advice from them. I should say that I, the last attorney that we spoke to that was willing to take on the duties of counsel for city council, I just happened to bump into him today by coincidence, and that's honestly true. I asked him, and he said he would do it on a special request only, not as general counsel for everything, but on a special request only, only a special project. Do you want me to pursue that? We don't, we don't have to, but just have to let me know. Yep, that's all we need. And I think it's important that an independent person tell me that.
Yeah, and if you could ask that person to tell you what section of the Ethics Code the mayor has allegedly violated.
That's all I want.
Does anybody have a problem? We just authorized Larry to cut out an attorney and get that letter. We all want a lawyer on the turn.
I think we can, I think we can discuss it. I think we need to discuss it, for sure.
Well, discuss it.
Are you talking about Lidle?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I didn't know my mic was on, I'm sorry. I think that might be a little too close to home. I think, I think we need to have total transparency so that there's just no question about it at all. We need to go outside of the community.
That's just, I bet the Springs attorney or Denver attorney would do the same thing. And probably for nothing.
I've had occasion to go with an attorney on an issue, and then against that attorney on another issue. An attorney has the. Uh, uh, an attorney has the responsibility to be perfectly honest with their clients. I, 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 no, I, any attorney, we can walk down the street and knock on a door and that attorney would have the responsibility to do his job, uh, according to the law. So I don't have a problem with this too close thing, I, that's fine.
Let's go.
Okay, uh.
I guess you would need a motion on Lidle or, 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 or a motion or, um, how, how it could be.
Well.
I would make a motion, um, to hire, uh, to seek outside, uh, attorney outside of the community, Colorado Springs or Denver. And that would be, uh, I think Mister Kogosik mentioned, uh, um, another city attorney staff, was that what you said?
Well, um.
Isn't that what, am I?
I frequently talk to the Denver City Attorney asking my advice, so she may not qualify.
Wow.
Because she asked my advice, the same with the Colorado Springs, uh, City Attorney when they're a man.
I, I just, I just, you know, I'm not, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, I'm speaking in terms of total transparency so that there's no, there's no lingering questions in the minds of citizens. So that would be my motion if I have a second, I don't know.
It was six oh to hire an attorney.
Right.
I think we're all hearing that we're worried about being too close and that makes sense to me. I'd like to give Larry the authority, he's heard the conversation. Instead of coming back to us and okaying an attorney, I'd like to give him the authority to hire one.
Not Lidle.
Pardon me? Motion to be to let Larry hire an attorney.
But we're gonna, we're gonna either tell him it needs to be outside of the community or he can do, right, that's outside. So I need a motion to hire outside of the community.
Make a motion to let him lead the thing.
Sure, that's fine, that's fine.
An outside attorney.
Outside attorney.
I need a second.
Out of the community.
Second.
Of, of the community. Okay, to end it, make it simple, let's. We have a motion to hire an attorney outside of Pueblo. And we have a second by Mister Aliff.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
And that includes giving you the authority to do the job.
To do the job, now I'm gonna run out, I'm gonna go out and call CML.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm gonna ask them to suggest an attorney to review this. And they're going to give us a, uh, uh, um. What's the wording?
Reference.
Well, CML has a general counsel.
A recommendation as to how, uh, whether the letter is, uh, violates the Code of Ethics and the city code. That's our question.
Period.
Period.
But you're gonna talk to an attorney with CML?
I'm going to hire an attorney.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
Based on a recommendation from CML. Call for the question. Passes six zero. Do we have any more business? Richard.